Sorry to interrupt, but I'm not getting any audio.
One moment.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. All right, so I just wanted to remind everybody of the City of Alpine YouTube channel where you can go and catch the meetings there. And then also you can attend, as you can see, by Zoom. And that's it for that. City Attorney, no report. City Manager, update on recycle center mulcher.
Just a quick update. Last time I notified the council and the public, we were missing a part. It was broken and we're trying to get it refurbished and brought back. That is no longer an option. Unfortunately, the machine is a little past its prime, and so Adalina is working on getting quotes. So hopefully get a new mulcher at a reasonable price so that we can continue. Currently, the recycle center is not taking brush for mulching, so that we don't pour and have fire. But you can still take it to the land.
Okay.
Is there anywhere we can kind of deal with Morrisons? Because they do have a mulcher that works.
I will make a note of that.
Yep.
Like buy their old one?
Well, it works and you might get a good deal in terms because it sits there a lot. Just thought.
You know, that's a great thought. We're also looking at the purchasing co-ops used and used.
Yep.
All right, does that conclude your report? Okay, all right.
I'm sorry. Last question.
It's currently down. It went down today. They're not accepting glass at the moment. If that can be fixed, we're just waiting for the mechanics to come in.
Okay.
All right, and there's not a city stuff update, so we're going to move into public hearings. I want to remind everyone here this evening that the council cannot respond to you when you come up. We can't respond nor comment if you choose to come up and say something during the public hearings. When you do come up, make sure you say your name and your ward number. So, public hearings are starting at 5:34. City Secretary, and the first one is public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-12-02 and ordinance amending Appendix C zoning Article One Schedule District Section Two dash R dash one, one family district to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, repealing the requirement that beauty salons are not accept not an acceptable use in a residential area by approved special use permit, providing the establishment of up to a $500 penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of the ordinance. Do I have anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number two. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-12-03 and ordinance amending the City of Alpine Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget Providing, Repealing Inseparability Clauses, the Texas Open Meetings Act Clause, and Providing an Effective Date. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to item number three. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit 2023-12-01, a short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established in 303 South 14th Street. The property owner of record is Joshua Cobos. The parcel ID of the subject property is 10502. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Moving to item number four. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit 2023-12-02, a short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at 801 East Avenue E. The property owner of record is Kim Langridge at two. The parcel ID of the subject property is 10653. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing will close at 5:36 PM. City Secretary?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda does contain six items. Item one, approval of November 14th, 2023 special meeting minutes. Item two, approval of December 5th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Item three, approval of the appointment of Larry Hood to the place two position on the Parks and Recreation Board. Item four, approval of the appointment of Guy Fielder to place four position on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and approval of the termination of the current appointment to the Development Standards Commission. Item five, approval of special use permit 2023-12-01, a short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at 303 South 14th Street. The property owner of record is Joshua Cobos. The parcel ID of the subject property is 10502. And item six, approval of special use permit 2023-12-02, a short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at 801 East Avenue E. The property owner of record is Kim Langridge at Ux. The parcel ID of the subject property is 10653.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I need a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Councilmember Nance, okay. All right, City Secretary, all council members voted in favor with Councilmember Sandate being absent. Okay, moving on to information and discussion items. So, number one, charter discussion. Where are we now? So, okay, City Manager?
So, I've gotten feedback from some of you. The main items of discussion moving forward will be the length or term of city council members increasing that from two to three years, specifically outlining payment or compensation, what the few or monthly compensation would be. Vacancies, providing a more structured outline of how the council moves forward with different vacancies and when they're announced, that kind of thing. The other item was censorship, censoring council members during meetings for certain behaviors or actions. And the last one, my recommendation to add a section to the charter that requires the charter to be reviewed every so many years, so that it's kept up to date. There are some, you know, like typos and things like that that need to be corrected as well. That would be cleaned up during that time. We're looking at a November election for this. It does have to go before a general election. Because of the items for discussion and making sure we get the verbiage for that correctly may wouldn't give us enough time. So, we're looking at putting that on a general ballot for November. It does have to be open to all wards. It can't just be open to specifics. That is where we're at. I would also like, just in my mind and thinking of adding that we actually appoint a commission moving forward. Currently, you don't have to have one, but I think it would be good to have citizens from the public. So, when it does go before election, they'll have to vote on the individual items that are being changed. So, depending on how many items we actually put into change, that's what they'll have to vote on. And then, of course, it will have to pass by majority. And then we could update our charter.
So, we can't do the typos as a, as a all typos, correct all typos?
There is language that we could correct something like that, but it would still have to be specifically like that. But the biggest feedback from everyone, I'm sorry, I did miss one. The city manager and city secretary positions and the hiring and terminating the votes. Putting clarity into that.
Okay, so what do you need from us in order to keep this going? Do you need more feedback? Do you need us to appoint members to? How do you want to set up the commission?
So, we don't have to have a commission right now. We're not moving forward with the commission.
Okay.
I've just been doing a lot of research as far as the verbiage that has to be used. Looking at other cities' references in regards to changing term limits to put in in the compensation. The vacancy, there are several options that we could look at and how we address that. So, it's just kind of going through and giving you guys some samples to go forward with. So, it will be put on the agenda for February.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you, right now, you don't need anything from us, which is okay.
Unless there's more feedback from any of the other council members. Currently, I've gotten most of you who have said something or another. But I do know that the compensation does need to be addressed because we have no record of what you actually. So, historically, we've been paying you so much per meeting, but we've never been able to find the reference where that number came from.
And for transparency, I'm sorry, for transparency, how much is that the council gets paid per meeting?
So, it's not per meeting.
Okay.
Ideally, that's what people think it is. It's $100 a month per council member and $125 a month per mayor. So, you have more than one meeting, and if you don't come to a meeting, you still get paid. So, it's not actually by meeting. But that can actually be outlined in the charter. Is it a monthly? Is it a by meeting? Is it specific for the type of meeting?
Okay.
Is it all students?
I'm sorry, you have to hurt me.
No, no, it's okay.
What's the sequence? You talked about February. My sense is this has got to be a discussion on it before we get into a proposal.
Oh, yes, definitely. So, we're going to have multiple discussions before it even gets to a proposed changes. The next meeting or in February, it's outlining some of the samples from all of the other cities who have been going through this process to give you an idea of how other places are doing it and see if you like them. I know of four cities who recently changed their vacancies. Some made it where very like one sentence, and another one has it actually broken out on the different types of vacancies and how to address it. Compensation is outlined in several of them, or it's a specific amount per month. I've only found one city that actually outlines it per meeting, type of meeting, and it's like a scaled. If it's a regular meeting, it's this much. If it's a special meeting, it's this much. So, it's really just giving you some options to look at. It's just, I've had to do the research as well to see what is available. And I like to see other cities and what they've done, because that's what's been approved by other cities and not kind of, you know, make it up as we go.
So, you might also want to include a schedule. If we look backwards from the election in November, when do things have to be approved, go on ballots to back up? Otherwise, we'll take it right down to the very end.
Yes, you will.
We know us.
So, we do have to call the order of elections by, I think it was August 19th. So, I believe it was the Monday, or maybe might have been September 19th. We have that date. Gio provided that for me, and it's just working backwards. And it will involve getting the attorneys involved to make sure that our propositions are worded correctly, so that it gets updated correctly.
It's like, we have a lot of education to do. I think most people have no idea what's in the charter, how it works, when's the last time it was updated.
Let me tell you. Can I tell you real quick? The last time the charter was updated was, well, just for everybody to know, was May 7th, 2005. And really, you should update these every, what, two to five years?
So, a lot of cities do it every two years to coincide with legislation.
Yeah, so we're a little behind.
Well, and I think the discussion about why we're considering updating, it's going to be important. So, people don't look like, don't look at it says, oh, this is being updated because we're updating it because legislation, we ought to do it every other year. We've not done it. We're finally getting to the swing of things. That's, to me, the start. Now, let's talk about the specifics.
The other side of changing the terms is it throws everything off. And that all has to be outlined with year one, how the elections were year two. And we want council to understand that having it in November, it is an additional election cost. We would work with the county as far as making sure.
Is that budgeted?
That'd be next fiscal year, so we haven't had those budget discussions.
Councilmember Nance?
No comments on that.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes? Councilmember Rodriguez? Anyone else? All right, let's move on to information discussion item number two. I'm going to lump that in with number three. The first one is a nonprofit donation policies. We currently don't have one for organizations such as Alpine Public Library, Family Crisis Center, Sunshine House, Child Advocacy, and others that the city donates to or may want to donate to. And then the second is tax abatements for historic renovations. We had talked about coming up with policies since we don't have any for either of those. And I'm actually going to move that to the next agenda, because there was some samples that council will receive, and we'll have that in the packet so that the public can see what the samples are, which will just help facilitate the discussion. Not that that has to be what we're adopting, but something just like a framework. Yeah, a framework to build upon and to discuss until later discussions. So, that's information discussion items two and three.
How would it be implemented? Because we don't have quote-unquote policy in our ordinance for Chapter 23. I presume it would be an ordinance?
I'm not sure. City Secretary?
It doesn't exist.
So, actually, the nonprofit can be done by resolution, every year annually. You actually have a ordinance already in place on commercial properties as value freeze. So, there's already a, our ordinance in place for tax abatement. It is specifically outlined in, from 1998, so it does need to be updated because we don't have a Main Street program. But this one does provide guidelines and structure to people who want to restore or restore restored buildings. It would just need to be updated. It does provide a percentage of assessed value. I mean, it's got eligibility, it's got application qualifications, and that's Section 90, Division Two.
Can we just get that one sent to us and work off of that one instead of the one the mayor sent? Since that one already exists?
You can. I mean, this has got the structure and all that. So, this would just be updating the ordinance to reflect the direction you want to go. The one thing I do want to point out is this is only talking about property tax. I know that in discussions with the little bit of Holland, they were also considering or asking for hotel motel abatement.
Is that legal?
While other cities have done it, I can't recommend it. We're not bringing in that one.
All right.
But I, I mean, we do have something already in place for property tax for people who want to restore, restore historical buildings.
All right. Any other comments before we leave that? Councilmember Nance?
Yes, I just had a couple on the tax abatement one. I watched a video on how San Antonio does it, and they had a just throwing numbers real quick. It had to be 30%. So, if the property was appraised at $100,000, they would have to dump $30,000 into the property before they got the tax abatement. It was a property tax abatement. And they would get a 10-year freeze on it. It was either a 10-year freeze on the property taxes or what they were previous to the construction, where they had a 50550, which was five years of zero and then five at 50% of the value. I was just going to see if Megan, well, and then they have the Texas historical ones, which could be, I think they said 25%. But that was done through franchise tax and nothing to talk about here. And then the federal ones as well. So, there was historical tax incentives on all three levels of that. Not just going to see if Megan would quickly go over what our current one is, about the 5,000 minimum and the 15%.
So, currently is at the time of the application for the property's assessed value freeze, the exterior and or interior must be in need of repairs or renovation that exceed 15% of the assessed value, but in no case less than 5,000 the year the work is to begin. So, this would be a tax freeze once approved for that year. So, the appraised value may go up, but they're only going to pay taxes on what we freeze it at. And it continues three years after completion of the project.
No, not 10 years, but three.
No, it's three. So, if it took them two years to complete it, and they would get an additional three years, so it'd be a five-year. And I said, and it does outline having to go before a review board. We would put finding and zoning, obviously not the Alpine Main Street program. They do have to apply. They do have to provide documentation. They do have to show the need, the reports. It also has consequences, so that we would be able to collect taxes, the back taxes, if they don't fulfill based off of that tax freeze. And we obviously could put it in the property as well.
And so you can send that to us?
Yeah, I can.
And one last thing I was going to add on that was looking at that Main Street program, the one that she sent us, Section 9056. That was from 1998, and I asked Megan today how many businesses actually have pursued that tax incentive from us in the Main Street program? She said since 2013-0. So, it's either too onerous of a process or the pot's not sweet enough. So, we would just need to look into that.
Do you know if there was anyone before 2013?
Not that I have records of.
Okay.
And I do want to add one thing, if you don't mind, Mayor, on the donation policy.
Go ahead.
And I do have some, some background information that you, as a council, need to understand that in order to do this type of a policy, that it has to have a three-part public purpose test. And then this is required by the Texas Supreme Court. Specifically says that it has to ensure that the statute's predominant purpose is to accomplish a public purpose, not to benefit a private party, retain public control over the funds to ensure that the public purpose is accomplished and to protect the public's investment. And three, ensure the political subdivision receives a return benefit. So, no matter what type of application or process we put into place, these three do need to be adhered to in order for it to be considered. One of the ones that we tend to have issues with is to retain public control over the funds. And that's where we have a council member on the library because there's a little bit of control over that. So, I just kind of wanted you guys to understand that there's a lot more to than just issuing a policy or passing a resolution. There are state guidelines. Public money is public money. And we have to ensure that it's not misappropriated or misused. It's not an easy one to write this one.
No. No. Okay, so moving on to action items. The first action item is City Manager.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-12-02 and ordinance amending Appendix C zoning Article One Schedule District Section Two R1, one family district to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, repealing the requirement that beauty salons are not acceptable use in a residential area by approved special use permit, providing the establishment of up to a $500 penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of this ordinance.
Okay, I need a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. City Manager?
So, this has been an ongoing item, just like the last meeting. This is just opening up the R1 to allow for those who want to operate a beauty salon to obtain a special use permit from the city council. This would apply in an R1, R2, or R3.
Okay, Councilmember Nance?
The only thing I would mention here was, I spoke with Megan earlier. So, if someone was cutting hair in a residential neighborhood and, you know, doing a business transaction, getting paid for haircutting previous to the ordinance change, it would have been illegal because you couldn't have a beauty salon in a neighborhood. And then after this actually passes, they would require a special use permit. So, if they don't get a special use permit, then it would be illegal. So, I guess there's no real material change from, you know, the perspective of the city for a lot of these people outside of the legal implications of it, so PDLR and all that.
All right. Councilmember Stokes? Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Stevens?
Down in the house.
Okay, all right. So, let's move to vote. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all right. So, I have two council members who have voted for. That would be Councilmember Stokes, Councilmember Stevens. And for those against, please raise your right hand. I have two council members who have voted against. Councilmember Nance and Councilmember Rodriguez. Hey, so that will fall to me to break the tie. Okay, I'm going to vote in favor of approving the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-12-02 and ordinance amending Appendix C zoning Article One Schedule District Section Two R1, one family district to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, repealing the requirement that beauty salons are not an acceptable use in a residential area approved by approved special use permit, providing the establishment of up to a $500 penalty per ordinance. Per ordinance. So, City Secretary, this ordinance passes. All right, moving on to the second action item. City Secretary, City Manager, this is your item also.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-12-03 and ordinance amending the City of Alpine Fiscal Year 2023-2024, providing repealing inseparability clauses, Texas Open Meetings Act clause, and providing that effectively.
I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, City Manager?
This is amending the budget to reflect the appropriate amount of revenue coming in on property tax and reducing the expenses within the street department.
Councilmember Stevens?
Nothing.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Nance?
Nothing on my end.
Okay, let's move to a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand to approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-12-03. City Secretary, all members present and on Zoom have voted in favor. Councilmember Sandate is absent. All right, so that leads us to the City Council member comments.
That is because I'm reading the whole. I have a whole statement to make. After much deliberation, I have made the decision to step down by May 2024 as the Ward One Counselor for the City of Alpine due to personal and health reasons. I feel privileged to have served this community. I love for the past two and a half, maybe three years. I know I have accomplished good things for our city, and I hope you all continue to support the sitting council. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you. I'll give that to the newspaper. They're checking to see if it can be put on election or if y'all are going to, or if it's going to fall to council to put somebody in my place. So, if it falls to that and y'all do it before May, I'll step down when y'all decide. I do appreciate not having to discuss it 9,000 times with everybody. I am not dying. The sheriff thought I was dying. Are you dying? No, no, I'm not dying. So, just a, just a decision I made.
And other than that, I have no comments.
Well, we respect your decision, and of course, we're going to miss you tremendously.
Oh, I'm going to be out in the audience then.
Don't make me have to shout.
Happy to have you escorted out. All right, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Just a reminder that Positions Two and Four are up for election to share. Gio, can you remind everybody of when filing starts and the deadlines and all that?
Sure, it's January 16th is the first day to file, and the last day is February 17th. So, if anybody's interested, you're welcome to contact me, and I can give you more information.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Wow, Judy.
I know.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Yes.
I thought, well, I thought it was a great workshop. And it's amazing, the workshop lasted longer than the meeting. And we have lots of work to do, so I'm looking forward to 2024. Thanks.
Okay, and as far as me, I just want to say thank you for your service to the city, Judy. We know you get paid a lot, and $100 a month pays lots of bills.
Deliverables.
The $100 a month. Yes, we're going to, we're going to really miss you, but thank you. And I want to thank everybody who comes out to our, oh, yeah, staring. Thank you. I, Judy just kind of. Oh, yeah, staring. Thank you. I, Judy just kind of. We're gonna have to have a break here soon. All right, Darren.
Uh, no comments here.
Hey, and so, yes, so with that, I'm going to. Read this statement that we're moving on to item number eleven, which is executive session. Pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session. From time to time is deemed necessary during this meeting for any posted agen- agenda item. Or to receive advice from the attorney as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council recess into executive session. Pursue it to five five one point oh seven one to. Talk and discuss with our city attorney. May I get a motion, please? And I need a second. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, we're gonna proceed to a vote. If you would like to vote in favor of the motion. To proceed into executive session, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary, all members present and on Zoom have voted to move into executive session. We are recessing into executive session. After a fifteen minute break, and it's currently six oh one P M. All right, so what that means for everybody. So what that means for everybody is it's it, you can go out, wait, and come back in after the executive session. If you want to find out if we have done any actions regarding executive session. Or you can tune in on Zoom or YouTube. All right, so thank you. Thank you. Yeah, whatever you do, yes, stay warm.
Okay, may I please have a motion in a second to reconvene into open session?
I can.
I need a second.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to reconvene into open session. Any discussion? Okay, so we will proceed to a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand to reconvene into open session. Okay, City Secretary, it is unanimous to reconvene into open session and the time is 6:36 PM. All right, that brings us to item number 12, action after executive session. May I please get a motion?
Mayor, I make the motion that the city council asked the city manager to send a letter to the Alpine Country Club to document concerns and issues with their compliance with the current contract and that she provide them a deadline for compliance.
Okay, I need a second, please. I'll second it. Okay, any discussion? Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Soaks, Councilmember Nance?
Uh, no, no comments.
Okay, all in favor of having the city manager send a letter to the Alpine Country Club to discuss issues that have arise arisen with their contract, please raise your right hands. Okay, City Secretary, it is unanimous that we are approving that the city manager send said letter.